Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council, City of Gilbert, City Council meeting Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 6:18 PM. I like that clock. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Pontenin?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councillor Polis?
Here.
Councillor Skjendzic?
Here.
Councillor Heitzman is excused. And we also have City Attorney, Chief of Police, City Engineer, Operations Director, and Clerk.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If you'd all please stand with us and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. And do we have any approved additions or deletions? I don't believe we do. Then on to the consent agenda. City Council minutes, the boards, commission minutes, invoices from previously approved projects.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Skjendzic. Any further discussion?
I just said on the first page there about the tank roof. Has that moved on? Was that, wasn't it in Brian's hands where he was?
We were just talking about it.
Yeah. I don't know, Colleen, if we know about that? About the tank offer that they gave us, the $65,000 credit plus a 20-year warranty? Do you know if that was moved on?
He did not give me an update on that. But I can certainly have him report back to the council on that.
Yeah, we just wanted to know. They got the information that we approved that.
Okay.
And any paperwork to follow? Yeah, because we had the verbal, but if there was going to be any paperwork to follow?
Okay.
Because we need to pay him that amount that we, you know, after the $65,000 credit.
And that was the agreement? Or that was what the council was proposing to resolve the issues then, is that?
That's what they agreed to on Zoom.
On Zoom? Also, there was an agreement that just needs to be addressed.
Yep, they verbally agreed on Zoom.
Okay, I will, I will talk to Brian and I'll make sure he gets back to the mayor and fix all their problems tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Could just hold a quick second. Sam, did they come up at all and finish that drip edge and stuff on it?
They came up, measured it, and they are, I would, haven't heard back from them. But they didn't come up, like, I think two days later and measured it all. Haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
So, so we hold the check until that's finished, right? We want to make sure that drip edge is in before, pardon?
I would think we want it completed.
Yeah.
Job's got to be done.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. And do we have any public input tonight? Please step up to the podium, state your name.
I'm here.
Okay, have a seat. Unless you want to come up and talk.
I propose to stimulate the economy. I'd like to take the school building and turn it to cannabis cultivation. Maybe get a master brewer in there. I understand that I might have to talk to the school board about that. But I'm bringing it up to the city council just to begin this project.
You got to speak more into the mic because I can't even hear you up here. I don't understand.
I have a proposal to stimulate the economy and I'd like to cultivate cannabis at the school building.
That, that building's going to be torn down.
I think there's still time to do something with it.
The school board has the, it's all theirs. They've gone out for bids.
It's in their hands.
Yeah, we.
So, I'm bringing it to the council. It's been my understanding that I may need to talk to the school board about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know when the next school board meeting is?
I do not.
Jill, can you get him a contact number?
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to hold a performance around the area and I need a space to do that, to have, to hold private auditions.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that last part, to hold?
To hold auditions, private auditions for a performance around the area. So I'd need a space to hold auditions for like a dance group movement, to have enough space. I don't have any income right now to maybe get a room at the community center or something like that.
Do these, I guess we rent the facility out. Do you have any information on what this is for, an event or anything?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to begin the process now. But I'd need to hold auditions first to get a group together to be able to have performance around the area, like in auditoriums or in stuff like that. But I need a place to hold auditions.
Right.
So I'm currently looking for a space for that.
So you have nothing in the works right now?
Well, I'm just beginning the process at the moment.
So my suggestion to you would to get that process completed and on paper, then present that to council so we have something we can read and what it's for, a name, and we'd be more than happy to help you out.
Okay. And then also, I'd like to just bring up, there's, I know from knowledge of living on the area basically my whole life about vacant buildings and stuff like that around the whole area range, bringing in refugees or homeless people or something and filling those up, those spaces up with people that need shelter. And it would bring in more income into the area after, you know, bringing in jobs for maintenance, people cooking, food supply, stuff like that. So that'd be another thing that I suggest the council looking into if you need that written also. But these are, these are ways to, the three offers or proposals that I just brought up are, would be ways to stimulate the economy around the area.
Thank you.
And then also, I currently got an intent to shut off my utilities and I just need a form. I missed out on getting the form earlier today on a, it's called, to declare inability to pay. So if I just get that form this evening, that would be, I'd appreciate that. If there's a clerk available.
I've never heard of that form.
Do you just feel like shut off or is it already scheduled?
No, there's a form that I need to fill out for, there's a bunch of steps that the city needs to do before that my utilities can be disconnected. None of those things happened yet.
We don't have to have a form. Our form is nullified when your bill is passed due. Then we need to contact the city to make a mutual payment agreement to try and help the board.
So there's like four steps that you need to take in?
I actually printed the steps we are required to make and we are by your desire.
Well, yes.
So you have, so I, the only, I received one form, the intent to shut off my utilities.
What's the actual bill or should we?
I don't receive any bills.
Well, then we need to give us actually an address that's yours or ours.
We have my address. So I just got the intent of notice, so I just, I'm just trying to declare that the utilities at my property don't get turned off tomorrow also.
We accept unfortunately $0 that you won't pay anything.
So you're supposed to provide me with a form to declare inability to pay? I just went to the library earlier and looked that up on the Attorney General's website.
And you want your form for?
So if you don't know of something, that's not my problem, that you don't have the knowledge for that doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
There's now, don't worry.
No.
Plus you have inability to pay.
Tomorrow and talk to the.
Where's your turn?
Mr. Burba, yeah, what you would need to do is contact the city clerk here, Jill Zoller. And you don't have to have a specific form, but you need to talk with her about a payment plan and try and make arrangements for that. And she's correct that it can't be $0. It has to be some amount of money that you can agree to.
Well, that's not true what you just said, but I will come in tomorrow morning and talk to the clerk if that, if they're available.
It does say if your utility is unable to assist you, you can contact the position of consumer affairs to help you.
Yes, I email them currently. But it's not, I'm not setting up a payment plan. You're supposed to inform me with a form, an ability to pay, which I'm trying to state that to the council meeting and that's on the Attorney General's website. And if, I don't know if you have that form, if it's on there or not, if you see that on there.
It says, it says that the, the safety assessment, we have it on our, it says it's something we could do.
Well, I'm not going to go over stimulation, but there's four steps that you need to go along with on that form. So, well, I don't have that paper in front of me, so.
Mr. Burba, just come and talk to Clerk Zoller tomorrow?
Yep.
And try to set up a payment plan that will work for your finances?
I have no income, so there's, there's no plan for payment. So I'm just stating that already, but, you know. So for the three stimulations to the economy that I stated earlier, just you're looking for paperwork for that?
No, just for the one that if you're looking for space to, for your auditions?
Yeah.
Come up with a, a plan?
Yep.
Name what your intentions are and there's, we might be able to help deal with space.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Thank you.
Say, Jill? I just told you I have to talk into the mic because they can't hear you on the TV or on the broadcast. You have to speak directly into the mic to hear you.
Move on to the reports from mayor and council. This is tough. I want to send out my thoughts and prayers to Katie Johnson. Her family and all others involved in the car versus moose accident that happened on Highway 53 about two weeks ago. Katie's mom, Michelle, works for the City of Gilbert as administrative assistant for the police department. If anyone would like to support Katie and her family as she recovers from her extensive injuries, there's a GoFundMe account that has been set up in her name, or you can donate in her name at the First National Bank of Gilbert here in town. It was a horrific accident. Katie, from last I heard, is doing well. She's got a long road of recovery ahead of her. So my thoughts and prayers are with the family. And that's all I have. Council Department?
Yeah, I don't have anything tonight too, but same thoughts are what you said in my second act or whatever. I feel the same as you do.
Thank you. Councillor Polis?
A couple of things. Same here, I responded to that accident. I know what it was like, so thoughts and prayers to the family on that. Second thing is, everyone should have known or heard about the fire in Evolent on Sunday morning. Sunday morning, right? Yeah. Sunday morning, I actually assisted in helping move a couple of vehicles, but seeing these guys work firsthand on what they go through on a daily basis when they have to run into them fires and then buildings and inhale that smoke and stuff, hats off to all of you, all the fire departments that responded, all the chiefs that were in control of the whole thing, understanding what could happen and when it could happen. I mean, it's outstanding to see firsthand what you guys go through, so hats off to all you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Skjendzic?
The other councillors and mayor spoke of Johnson's and hopefully Katie has a full recovery, but like you say, it's a long road. I guess the only other thing we have, we had a little touch of weather, what, two weeks ago or whatever it was, and just drive accordingly. It, roads get slick really quick around here and none of us like responding to any of that.
I forgot about that.
So just drive accordingly for the weather. That's all. Thank you.
Reports from staff, boards and commissions, fire chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here again tonight in place of Chief Kaiwais on the road for work again. So I'm here tonight asking for approval to apply for the 2025 FEMA grant, which is a 95-5 split. $1,000 for Danny Mackey to write the grant for us and that is in our budgeted item for 2024, for $1,000 for the grant writing. The FEMA grant, we're going for 15 sets of turnout gear from head to feet and 15 SCBA's complete with full air pack, spare bottle, and a face mask. Total amount of $195,083.90. Cost for the City of Gilbert is approximately $9,754.20 and then the remainder will be paid by FEMA. That $9,754.20 we have in the budget for 2024 for three sets of turnout gear. So that money that the city would have to pay is already in the budget for the three sets of turnout gear. And the price, this price includes projected cost increase for 2025. So all that has been combined into this. So thank you very much and that is all the chief had for tonight.
I'll move. Moved by Councillor Polis. One second. Seconded by Councillor Pontenin to approve the purchase of the setup gear in your mount.
To apply for the grant?
To apply for the grant for the gear. Yes, and the grant, grant writer of $1,000. Any further discussion?
I got one thing, just to clarify, he has 900 written here. Is it 1,000 or is it 900?
I've got 1,000 on my paper that he gave me.
Okay.
For Danny Mackey.
All right.
He holds 1,000, less, no, it's less.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. City Attorney Kusluczyk. Did I say it right?
You did. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. I don't have a formal report, but I'm here to provide any advice I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
I have nothing at this time, mayor.
Thank you. City Engineer John?
Update on the approved plumbing? Last week, it went up the hill with the sanitary sewer, got past the.
Am I on?
We are now.
Okay. The proof plumbing, Joe and Sam got through the holiday gas entrance today, so, and actually with the weather, the way it's been, looks like we might try to get that patched with two minutes in the next couple of days, so.
I was hoping so.
Yeah. And it sounded like talking to Sam and to Pat Ziegler to do some other patching in town, so, you know, they made an effort to get past that driveway so it can get patched, so, so hopefully that comes out. Supposed to be nice the next couple of days, so that's all I had for an update. Excellent. Thank you. Public Works?
I don't have much of an update, just kind of ongoing works down at, down at the rec center. We're doing some, doing some work inside, blocking off some bathrooms, getting ready for hockey.
Hockey season, the winter season.
Season and all that. And then we had the street sweeper out, did a good job sweeping up all the leaves here over the last couple of weeks when it was, you know, wet and not much dust. We hauled a bunch away. Alley pickup went really well and, you know, we're just kind of getting ready for winter and we're pretty busy. We got some vacations going on and whatnot, so that's all I got for council. And if there's anything you guys got to meet.
Don't, don't say that word out loud. Actually, I did have some compliments on the alley pickup and people noticed the street sweeper was out.
Yeah.
Nice to see.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't stay that way.
Right, right. It's kind of nice. We ran into some good weather and we were able to have it out longer this year than normal, so it was, it was nice. We, we did haul a lot of leaves to the dump, so.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, I won't turn any mics on you. This one's kind of.
Still on.
Yeah.
You're stuck.
The other one wouldn't turn on, that one won't shut off. Oh boy. All right, do we have campground host here or we?
I think she's gone for a year.
But we'll just skip over her unless she's there.
What's the area you're going?
I wouldn't even know what Arizona is.
Does she use our phone or does she have our or our cards?
I believe so. Okay, well, we'll move on to the library director, Sue.
Did we do time?
Yeah, we did. Didn't have anything. We can't hear you, Sue.
Hello?
There you are. That's better.
Okay, great. I have about nine of the legacy projects, art projects. These are looms that you step on of your box so that you can try weaving. You can do bookmarks or coasters, all things. And they're quite delightful, but I've only got about nine left, so anybody who wants one, please come here. Of course, they're free. We have for the kids, we have bone deco for them. They can make it here or they can take it home. Either way, again, free for the kids to do a little bit of art. And then we are going to be closed Thanksgiving Day and Friday. And that's about all I have. I believe it's going well, so. Any questions?
Excellent. None from me. Thank you, Sue. Advisory Boards?
Good evening. So I saw that it was included in the, in the consent agenda. Just one thing that I want to bring up from our last campground meeting. So as we were going through, looking at all the policies and procedures, we of course went through current city ordinances and apparently the existing ordinance that was put out in, that was voted on in 1985, says that all camping must be no longer than 14 days, which of course is a problem for our seasonal campers that we have. We have about 10 of them. And so we are asking the council to review the ordinance, which is 91 dot 12, and specifically it is section 11. We included some proposed language, which is like, was in the consent agenda, which would allow us, if we make those changes, would allow us to have seasonal campers. And so I think it would be in the best interest of the city that, like, we do that. So I understand, you know, changing an ordinance, you have to have it introduced and then a first reading and a second reading. If we can at all get that done before the first of the year, I know that we already have, all of those units are already basically spoken for and are kind of under contract. So in order for us to actually do this the right way, we have to, you know, pay attention to our own laws and get those corrected. So that's the first thing that I would bring up and I would, I don't know how you want to do that if you want to have, if you want to have the city attorney look at things first and then introduce them at your next city council meeting. I think there's still enough meetings during the year to be able to get that done.
I had a question on that. You know, you highlighted this area and it says a period of more than 14, unless in a designated seasonal campsite. Can't you just?
That was my wording. That was my, that was my change.
Well, that's the change for the new.
Yeah, yeah.
Verbiage.
Yeah. So you can see in here, if it is, if it has a strike through, that's the old language. If it's underlined, that's the new language.
Would we want to have that in there at all? Wouldn't you want to just strike that 14 day? What does it matter how long somebody stays?
It's a public campground.
Well, so, so part of this, it's important to understand kind of how the law treats somebody who's a seasonal or monthly camper versus a weekly weekend. So in the state of Minnesota, if you're a camper and you are staying less than 29 days, you are a camper. If it is 30 days or more, the city is a landlord. And then it becomes landlord tenant issues. And so for that, we have a lease for each one of those. So, and, and the other piece about it is that this last year, it was a response to COVID, campgrounds are now essential businesses as far as providing housing because of that
So, Colleen, I suppose an amendment to an ordinance takes just as long as an ordinance change, right? It doesn't matter?
You would have to still go through the same process. If that's correct, Councillor Pontenin.
So could this be considered the introduction to the council tonight?
If the council's satisfied. And again, I didn't see this on the agenda, so we hadn't really looked at it very closely either, so perhaps you want to have the city attorney look at it and then do a first reading and second reading that way.
Next.
Just double check.
Introduction first, right? And then first and second, so it's a three-step process.
I believe you can do the introduction and the first reading together.
At the same time?
Yeah, and that way if we need to make any adjustments to it, we can.
Speed it up then, okay. So for next rea, next?
For next council meeting, we can have it on the agenda.
Yep. And so that leads me into the second piece of this. So at our meeting, we went through several different recommendations and so my, my basic request is so that we can be put on a couple of different topics, be put on the working session for the 28th meeting. And just to give you kind of the overview, and I'll provide all of this to Jill so she has all the background in advance. So CB09, 2023. So CB 09 2023 was to, we approved updated policies for the campground. We kind of looked at everything. Now that we have a new system, there were some operational changes that needed to coincide with that, so we needed to update some of our policies. We have proposed rates for 2024 and I'm sure that will generate some questions as well. There was a discussion around credit and debit card fees in which we are recommending, the board is recommending that we pass those fees on to customers. Similar to what you see in other lodging establishments and restaurants, et cetera. Cost savings for the city. We made a proposal to introduce a, what's called a site lock. It's an industry standard. Want to be able to talk about that. And then lastly, we had a discussion and recommendation to approve the use of dynamic pricing. Which is essentially a change to the rack rate pricing that you would approve. In cases where our occupancy is high enough to kind of change the supply and demand. It's a, it's a, it's a method for us to raise more money and to bring in more revenue from the campground. So, but I wanted to have a chance to talk about all of those, all of those at the same time. So that depending upon what the council decides, we will hit the January 1st implementation date for the new system. And then lastly, real quick update with the system. I got a message back from Firefly today. They have imported about 6,700 past customer data records. That has been completed. I'm going through, starting tomorrow and starting to do the testing of that. The next step will be to import all of the future reservations, which that should probably take about a week or so.
Excellent. Thank you. And Clerk Zoller.
Mayor, do you want to issue, do a motion to direct the city attorney to deal with that ordinance based on Mr. Skirby's request on the campground ordinance?
I suppose I'd give you a jump on it. We were thinking of doing it next council, but yeah.
Well, if you'd like us to have something at the council meeting, prepare something.
Okay.
Do an announcement.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll make that.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
Yeah, to prepare.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that, yes.
Supported by Counselor Potman to direct the city attorney to prepare literature on the ordinance change. For what was it, Paul? 90 point?
Uh, 91 point 12.
91 point 12. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oath, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. That'll help speed it up. Now Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. First, I'll run some financial numbers by you. We currently have in our general checking $930,941.21. Payroll for November was $121,641.55. Less outstanding checks and our current check register just approved in our consent agenda will have $614,580.67. I do want to make a note, we still have money in our savings and in our interim water fund. I have not requested those back. I'm just going to kind of let those sit and earn some more money until we need to submit them, so. We do have receipts to submit there. And then in the campground fund, we have $106,202.83. Not a whole lot in updates. I'm removing along on training and filling in the gaps for what we needed to do. Within the city to keep everything moving forward with the few that we have in the office right now, everybody that we know is. I did have a request from a couple of ladies that came in the office and would like to have authorization from the board to advertise on Facebook.
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it.
Smack it.
How's that?
Nope. Wow. So that's three. Three that don't work. Are they battery operated then?
They are.
So we might have to check the batteries, that's.
All right. Try, try that again.
That sounds better.
Okay. So they came in and they would like to decorate the gazebo. We have our beautiful gazebo. Nobody does anything with it and they thought it would be just great to go ahead and decorate it for Christmas. And they'd like the authorization to advertise for donations through various sorts. They're thinking a lot of people probably have extra stuff that they could utilize and then they'd get volunteers to decorate it. Bob went and looked. There is electricity off one of the light poles. We might have to do something to.
Plug in on a pole that you could just string across over the sidewalk onto the roof so it'd be out of the way. I believe that when you do the decoration, Sam, maybe you could string that at the same time.
Across over there. And then, you know, just kind of, as we were talking, maybe they'd use more, you know, universal covers, colors for other, you know, 4th of July, different things if they used appropriate lights. I know Mayor and I talked about the lights from up at the city, or I'm sorry, at the school, that maybe we put them down there, you know, just some, some things to get that area just utilized and make it more festive. Other towns have coronations in theirs, you know, and we'd like to start using ours for a little more functions as well, so. I said I'd bring it up to the board if they'd go ahead and give them authorization to start doing that.
I'll move. I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Skinsich. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, you know, as long as there's no liability issue with people volunteering to be on ladders to decorate. That's the only issue I have. With it. And I don't know if there's waivers that have to be signed by the volunteers.
It wouldn't hurt since it's city property. I mean, you do have some, you know, insurance protection and whatnot, but if you want to just prepare a simple waiver, if you want us to submit something to, I think that's a good idea.
I've got one thing on that same kind of note. They're looking at using lights and stuff like that?
Right.
Are those going to be, or should we, I guess, should we have those approved from somebody to use? I'm just thinking it's, the last thing you'd want to have is somebody up there and getting shocked or.
They have a right lighting.
Shorted and gazebo burns out.
Other towns might utilize Public Works to put the lights up, but I know even just wreaths and garland, you know, are, are nice, you know, even without light. I don't know if they'd put lights all over where. I don't know if they have a full thought process, but.
They were talking about electricity though, so they wanted.
That's true. That's true. That's true.
I guess maybe see what they come up with before, commit to that.
Maybe have Sammy look at it to make sure it's safe to be put up outside in the weather.
Well, start, if they get donations in the money form, they could go out and buy new too.
Yes.
So we should try and see what happens, you know.
And then you were thinking the two lights up at the Elles Elementary?
Yeah, we had mentioned where.
I was going to bring that up. I kind of forgot about that. If we were, if we were in a pinch to have to go up there and get those out of there yet or not.
We got them.
Oh, we did get them.
Sam was able to get up there and got them.
So it looked like it'd be a good spot to put them by the gazebo, but then of course we'd have to have power there permanently. And you may have to go under a sidewalk or whatever to get the power there all the time. And then you could utilize that power for the gazebo in the future for Christmas decorations instead of stringing it over the sidewalk now temporarily.
Sounds nice. Be nice to be utilized anyway rather than just sit there in a snowbank basically all winter.
Maybe not basically next summer, I know we're talking to you too, you know, I think in the sidewalk that goes to it or just put, you know, put colors on each side or something. I don't know, start using it.
It's a nice location, nice little break spot. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oath, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero.
Aside from that, I don't think I have anything else unless you guys have questions for me. Just want to remind everybody, we are also closed Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday.
Excellent. On to old business. Sam, with the wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant update.
Think water treatment plant, we got a meeting, is that tomorrow? 10 o'clock? 10:30. Other than that, the water plant, we got new business. We'll talk about that under there. Otherwise, it's been running pretty good lately, so. I don't really have much of a report on the sewer plant. It's been running, it's running pretty good, so.
Right?
No report is better than a report sometimes.
Exactly. Excellent. On to new business. Motion's from the working session. Actually. Let's, let's, let's do some juggling here. I know we have some people here that want to get probably out of here. And now I see she laughed.
Sorry.
Do the twerk one.
Liability. Do the liability one quick.
Yeah, okay. We'll move on to B. League of Minnesota City liability coverage waiver form, tort limits.
Mayor, council, this is a standard form that the city receives every year. It's, Mr. Lindsay, in my opinion, that you should not waive liability. I think it's kind of, it's for itself. That would be our recommendation for the council on that. Give any questions?
I'll make a motion to not waive.
I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Polis to not waive. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oath, say nay. None. Motion carries four to zero. Now will I have you come up and to the podium? This is the Evlet Elks Lodge, number 1161, gambling request at the Alibi Bar.
So I was approached by the Alibi. They currently have charitable gambling through the Virginia Elks Lodge and they want to switch to the Evlet Elks Lodge. And there's a paper by Gambling Control that says the city council has to approve it. And I believe you all have that.
Yep, the resolution.
I will tell them about the funds. Marion's making me do all kinds of things, just so you know. We currently have charitable gambling in Gilbert at the Downtown Bar, the dugout and the Gilbert VFW. So now we'll have one additional site. All of our funds are donated. We are required to give away a percentage of our profits through charitable gambling. We currently are four star rated, which means that we give away over 40% of our money and it all stays in the area that it was played in. So we have sites over in Chisholm, we have sites in Hibbing and we have sites in Gilbert and Evlet. And so the sites in Gilbert and Evlet, we give to your Gilbert 3rd of July. Veterans, initiatives and students are primarily what we do. And then also like the Quad City Food Shelf, which helps. Oh, I'm getting my breathless. I feel like on the spot. Anybody really that asks us for money, we, we give donations to and it's my pleasure to keep it in the community. So that's one of the things that we have to do and that I make them do. I don't send the money anywhere else. It's played here. It should be spent here. Another thing that's like not on the agenda, but that should be on the agenda, and I don't know that I'm really necessarily the person to tell you this. Because it's going to cost me money, but there are a lot of cities that have an ordinance on their records that you get 10% of the net profits that are played at your charitable sites. Currently, they have that ordinance on bio in Hibbing, or I mean in Chisholm and in Evlet. So if that's something that you want to do, go ahead and do it because you are bound by the same rules I am bound by, so it has to go to certain things. But for instance, your gazebo, we could give donations to go towards buying the lights or the decorations that are going to go up at the gazebo. As long as it's a 501(c)(3) that we're donating it to or we're giving a voluntary contribution to the city. Or if we give the taxes. And then the taxes come to you either monthly or quarterly. Currently, we do both. We do monthly in Chisholm and quarterly in Evlet. And I just need a signature on one of my papers or a resolution. And I'm done talking.
I, I guess, Sam, maybe you can answer this. I think that the Sam Bar, isn't the fire department LinkedIn?
Yeah.
So could the fire department take on the Alibi Bar also?
As far as what?
Why? So the money stays in town.
As far as what? What do you mean by take it on?
Charitable gambling.
The pull taps and such?
Whatever she's dealing with from the Alibi. I know Brian, Brian, remember, made the comment and.
Earlier this year, there was an ordinance he said he was looking into and I don't know if it was this 10% one. It is.
Can we actually talk about it from charitable missions standpoint, so that we get a chance to start reviewing the ordinances? That is actually one of the first ones that is on our list of recommendations.
And that would come from any charitable gambling organization you have in town. So it would not only be me or the Alibi Elks. It'd be whoever has the gambling at any other locations that we don't have in town.
The one that's been brought up before, and I don't know, Sammy, I don't remember how many years ago, probably 10, 15 years ago about this anyway. And at that time. The fire department, as far as our fire department, our charitable gambling, I was part of it for a while. I haven't been for many years, Sam's the, the chief over there for that, but. The 10, that 10% would have pretty much broke us at that time. That's why I think the city didn't do it. And even now, a majority of the money that comes into the fire department from the one site that they have. Comes back in through the 3rd of July, 4th of July, or anybody that has written requests or, you know, what would you say, Sam?
Well, there's, there's certain, certain statutes that you gotta, that you have to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could have gotten the Alibi and whatnot, but we don't, which is fine, but we, I don't have the money to put in. For doing the job.
But that's why we.
That was my question. That's, I just wanted to know because then all that money stays in town and you don't share it with Ever.
We just didn't have the.
We don't have the manpower.
Resources and, but you probably don't know, what's the percentage that comes back to Gilbert?
Uh, you, the most you can get is 10% of our net profit.
Whatever you contribute.
Yeah, from the locations that are in your town. Quick math. I don't even want to guess.
Yeah.
What I can tell you is do you have, and this might be directed to Sam, do you have a friends of the volunteer fire department in town? Do you have a 501(c)(3) that is under your fire department?
We directly.
I know, but like for us to donate to you, like the Evlet Fire Department has what they call a friends of the Evlet Fire Department and they've actually created a 501(c)(3), so we can directly donate right to them instead of going through the city. Okay. And I think there might be different laws and rules on, on fire departments versus fraternal organizations on how we have to give our money away. This is my full-time job, so I do this all day, every day, seven days a week. I'm in the bar more than anybody in this room. Yes, I do well. So.
So that was just my question. I just wanted all the money to stay in the tunnel instead of.
We, at one time, the third department had, I think, three sites and it just got, it was too much.
It's a lot. There's a lot of statutes that you have to follow.
And if anybody doing it, it's a full-time job.
I'm the only one. It's me and the next person that does it full-time is in Duluth.
Okay.
So most of the people that do this job do it as a secondary job or, you know, a little extra pocket money at night, but.
So if the city is approached by somebody. So if the city is approached by somebody looking for donations, we can point them over to the Elks.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. So, so we can say how we want the donations given to us?
If we, if you put an ordinance on your books that it's 10%, then you have that say over that.
Oh, then we can do that with whatever we want.
But you can require me to give you a donation list, and I can do that once, I do that once a year for Hibbing.
Maybe something.
I give them a list of all of the charities that we've donated to in town. And it's a real quick report that I have to do on my... We do two students of the month every month from September to April, I believe. Or May.
Yeah, so, so then we could designate it towards the 4th of July if we want.
Yep, and we're doing the 3rd of July again. Last year, we did it, we're doing it again this year. We're doing a bingo match at the VFW up to 3,000. Last year, they made a little over 3,000. So what happened is they conducted bingo at the VFW, and they did a 50-50 pot for three weeks. And then we paid the bingo caller from the Elks. And then we gave the VFW all the money that they made, the whole entire profit for those three weeks, or the 3rd of July committee, plus we matched it up to 3,000. So we ended up giving them about $3,400, $3,500 last year for the 3rd of July, and we've committed to do that again this year.
Just one last question. You know how Mountaineer does theirs?
Mountaineer, the city of Mountaineer? I, I do not. We don't have any sites in Mountaineer.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I, you're at the power to make the ordinance, make the ordinance and make the fire department exempt from paying the tax, since they're a city entity. I mean, that's a way to get around them not having to pay, but everybody else in town having to pay.
That is an option? I didn't know that.
You can write an ordinance to whatever you want. You're the guys, right? Like, you're the power. I mean, like, yeah, okay, so you can't break the law, obviously, but... But is, does your fire department run under your city?
No, it runs under the Relief Association.
I don't know what that is. Is it a charitable organization?
It's... The relief is the, I guess, the retirement portion of the fire department.
All right, well, that's something for your city attorney, but maybe you could make them exempt from having to pay taxes. It's an option.
Yeah.
You can look at it.
I feel like in by a lot of all the years ago when I did, I know the fire department, it was our duty to assist, and we run where we have to test. There for many years as well.
Yes, fire departments, hockey associations, and fraternal organizations are pretty much who run it up. There's, there's two of us basically in town, plus a couple of little fire departments. But we can also give to your fire department, so.
I'll move on there.
Moved by Counselor Pulis.
I'll second.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pus say nay. Non-motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Thanks for the info.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, on that note, just to touch, could we, would you direct the attorneys, I guess? Is that something we'd want to do? For charitable gambling, is have the city get their portion?
The 10%?
Yeah.
I want to say we did. Earlier in the year, we asked Brian to look into that, and he was going to give us that feedback.
And would we do that? Just, it would help the fire department part of it out if they were exempt? Because I don't know what's the percentage that comes back here.
We've got to give away 33%.
But we give more than that away?
Some years we don't.
Well, some years there isn't anything to give away.
But from what I, what I know is part of that 10% also comes as a 33%. So I would have to give away 20%. The city would then have to donate the other 10%.
10%?
You know?
So I guess that wouldn't matter?
It wouldn't matter from what my research was at the time. But there is, as far as I know, there is a lot of that city would have to either... I don't know if there's restrictions or if you have to donate that stuff or, you know, what, what the spending of that money is. But if there is.
I don't have them off the top of my head. There are specific requirements on how you spend that 10%. And it has to be, I think, a charitable purpose of some kind.
That's what I think it is, is to donate, you know, if you're taking away that donation from us, and you're going to donate.
So maybe we just leave it alone?
It's not like you can't take it and use it for, for spending on the budget. You have to give that 10%.
You're right.
So I think, like, didn't you bring up, I'm trying to think you brought up, a group getting together for?
You're responsible all the way for, I think, reporting that, all the reports back and forth to Gambling Control and State too. Because I know we have to be in touch with like Minnesota State Revenue and Gambling Control and the reports. So there would be some reports that we would also have to make sure that money is going to work.
Right.
So, you know, before you, you do that, maybe it's going, it would be a good thing, but before you do that, make sure it's not too much work or too much burden on whoever's doing those reports.
It may cost more to actually do it, to just give, end up giving it away. The city's really not coming out ahead with it.
It all depends what you can give it away to.
Right.
But you guys have free will of giving it to whoever.
No.
There's no, there's certain criteria. We gotta, we gotta make sure we have.
Okay, so it's the same thing we would have to follow.
If you want just a, basically a brief summary of the process and the updates and what it can be given to, we can provide that the next week for the council's consideration.
Yeah, so we can, we can look into that anyway and see what comes of it. I, I thought Brian said he had something ready to go, you know, the words he used that, this was a few months ago, Tom.
Yep, I remember him saying, and that he was going to provide it, and we haven't, I haven't seen anything.
I'll add it to my list, I got a little list.
So do we need another motion for that?
Go ahead and do it, we have it on record, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. We have a motion to direct our city attorney to research the charitable gambling ordinance aspect for city.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich. Supported by Counselor Pulis. All, any further discussion?
Couldn't have said it any better.
Exactly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pus say nay. Non-motion carries four to zero, thank you. Yeah, we'll do the wastewater treatment plant, swivel joints and tank, one and two, pumping decant tank, three and four.
This is something I brought up last, last meeting, and we tabled till this meeting, I got some more information. I did talk to Peter a little bit about it. So we, a little back, back thought on it. We, we were having issues with the decant arms in all the, our holding tanks. And so, once we were able to get the, the press trailer up here and get rid of all the, the fluid in the tanks, because they were all full, we were able to go down there and inspect these, inspect the swivel joints. What it came out to be is the swivel joints were made of aluminum, and they're in a high, highly corrosive spot. So one thing is, is on the first thing, we were looking at tanks three and four. We were looking at using pumps to pump out of these tanks, the decant. And what that is, is when we, we put a sludge in, in the tanks, it, it aerates, so it doesn't get stagnant or whatnot. But we'll, we'll relax the aeration in them, and it'll, the liquid would come to the top, the heavier stuff falls. So then what we, what the arms were for is you were supposed to drop the arms and take that liquid, and it goes back through the plant. Well, what we come up with is, we would put a 90-degree ductile pipe, painted ductile pipe, come up, and then we would use these pumps and pump the decant into the, the 90-degree elbow. And so we, we've been talking about that for quite some time. It was on the work order, and then we stopped it. So what we talked about last time was the estimated cost left to do that repair was $19,000. ScanTech said they would, they would split that cost with us, you know, due to, and it's, I believe that estimated cost was also, I think, I believe the, the Magni cost too. So that's what I was understanding. So we are getting some equipment too. The Davit hoists are all going to be made out of stainless, and there's a crank that lifts up the pumps and down. And that's where, I guess, part of the, the 50-50 share comes from on that side. On tanks one and two, ScanTech mentioned that they will take the whole cost of that. The, the installation costs and the, the stainless steel cost. I know those swivel, the, the cost for the tanks one and two, just the stainless steel swivel joint was about eight grand. So I, I know they were looking at about 16, if not more, for tanks one and two, plus then they would take half the cost of the 19. So I know it, it's, I don't know if it's a, it's something that's kind of critical, because we are filling those tanks as we speak, and the only way, if, if we don't move forward and the tanks fill up, there's no way to get them back down until we get the press trailer back. So right now, we're currently filling tanks three. I, I think there's maybe about two to three feet in there. The plan was to do tanks three and four, and then push all the sludge over to there so we can get into tanks one and two. But, so it's, it's kind of a critical thing, but, I mean, it's up to the council if, if they want more information on it or not.
One question. Why are they willing to replace tanks one and two with swivel joints? Did they originally put in aluminum and it deteriorated? And now they trying to fix the mistake of not using stainless in the first place? Or why are they volunteering to pay for this fix?
Well, tanks, see, like, tanks one and two, the decant, we, we've been doing pretty good with the decants off of tanks one and two, using the swivel joints that are there. Tanks three and four, the decant line is not put in or is not deep enough. So it, it seemed like we were having to go lower with pumps to get a good decant. Plus, like, tanks three and four, when we're filling those up, we can't start decanting until tanks three and four are halfway full. Where with the pumps, we can start decanting right away, you know? And that's why we just, it, it seemed like it was a better operation for us with the pumps on tank threes and three and four versus one and two.
But why are they willing to pay this money unless they're admitting that they did something wrong in order to cause this problem?
I, I didn't ask them that.
It's not a business of their heart, is it?
What's that?
I mean, and that's my question. Why are they giving us this money and doing it for free in one and two, and then half on the other?
I, I. I, I think a lot of times it comes out to is, you know, they are seeing we, you know, we're getting, I guess, I don't know if it's an upgrade or if we're getting some, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. But that's what they offered.
Well, yeah, I say go ahead with it. I mean, and maybe if that was in the original design and they put aluminum over stainless steel, and that's why they're doing this? You know, great, but you guys need it? I know it might decrease the labor involved in running that operation, so I'm all for that. So I make a motion to go ahead with this. That's my motion to go ahead and do what we have here in front of us with the swivel joints and pumping decants in tanks three and four.
I'll support it.
Moved by Counselor Pon, and supported by Counselor Skinsich to approve the swivel joints in tanks one and two and pumping decants in tanks three and four. Any further discussion?
I would just like to get an explanation why they're paying for, fully on one and two and partially on three and four. That's all I would like to get at some point. Why they feel, seems like they feel guilty about something. That's how I think, that's in my head, that's how I look at it.
Well, just looking at what they read here, the aluminum was, well, very corroded or in poor condition or whatever.
And I don't know if it was new, was it new to start with, did they put it in?
But.
That's why. So that explains it.
Are they doing, three and four, they're, they're adding the pump then? And those lifts?
What we're, what we're doing, we would just, we just go buy a pump, like FNR, which is a sewage pump, and just drop it in the hole and bring it up. That's all we've, we've been doing, and it's been working on great for three years. You know? So, you know, we looked at giving up, having them put in a different pump, and the pump was just too expensive, and this has been working for us.
So this is basically what, you're going to keep that system, but you'll have a?
A crank, yeah.
To lower it, to lower it and lift it, you'll just have a crane, crane on a crane.
So this, is this crane a good enough quality one, where it's going to last?
As far as I, I know, yes, it is.
All right. Just so it ends up being more of an advantage for it, not a?
Right.
More of a hindrance, that's going to have to be changed.
Right.
Some of our people down there, because they can't lower them down.
We don't want any injuries, so.
No, we don't.
No.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pus say nay. Non-motion carries four to zero. And the motions from the working session. Which Clerk Zoller graciously took notes on for me. Do we have the, a motion to... Do we have to go through city attorney for the property lot, for the lot descriptions and?
I think it would be a combination of efforts, Mayor. If I recall, it would be Mr. Jamnik doing the, giving us the legal description for the easement and the resolution that goes with it.
So we need the final plans first, but we need the more interesting.
Motion to go forward with the lease agreement with Delta, the dental office. So a motion.
I'll move.
By Counselor Pulis.
Support.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich to move forward with the preparations per se for the Lot 17 for the dental office.
For the?
For an easement.
For, for the easement for the Lot 17, correct. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pus say nay. Non-motion carries four to zero. And do we have a motion to move the trailer off of Lot 17? Or do... We, we're going to table that for further inspection or looking?
We can move it, we just don't.
Did it get paid already, kind of?
It did, so to kind of.
Just do it, we can pick a spot.
It got paid already, we paid Armory Shell?
Yeah, they were, they didn't cash it.
We have to pick a spot then, so we can.
Pretty much, so.
So we're sending you a motion to move it pending spot picking?
Yeah.
Yeah, a motion to move forward with the removal of our trailer, pending we pick a, a spot for it to rest.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Yes, if we put it on the record, Joey, one of the stain people is personal.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Skinsich.
You'll second.
Supported by Councilor Poten. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, three to zero, with Councilor Pulis abstaining. Perfect. the garbage increase for base rate for commercial. in the utility rates, I guess, we're including all that, correct? Councilor Poten?
Yeah.
But?
So our motion will need to include that we'll approve those rates pending public discussion, correct? So we'll set at our next meeting prior to public discussion or participation?
So we'll set, so the motion for tonight is to move forward with public discuss, public discussion for our next council meeting on November twenty-eighth.
Do we also have to say what the increases are tonight?
If you can, if not, you can reference, was it in the packet already? It was not, right?
It was not.
Yeah, if you, I would say it for the record then, if it was not part of the agenda packet.
Can I have you read that?
Yeah, I can read.
Councilor Poten, because he's.
It's my, so, I got one. So, the first increase is a ten dollar increase to cover a bond payback. It's a line item on our utility, utility bill labeled twenty-two A debt. So there's a ten dollar increase that, and that's used for, to pay back, make our payment each year of a hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we need to collect fourteen dollars per person, per month, in order to cover that bond payment. That's the number, first one. And then we need, because of inflation and other cost increases, we need to increase our water usage rate by ten percent. So it's going to go from sixty-seven cents per one hundred gallons to seventy-three cents per one hundred gallons. And then there's also a ten, ten percent rate increase in our kilowatt charges needed to cover, it needs, it's for customer usage. We lost a school, so we were making a profit off our sales to the school. So in order to recoup some of those monies, we determined that a ten percent rate increase was needed on the kilowatt. And that would bring it from nine point one cent to a ten point one cent. A one, ten percent increase brings us to ten point, that will be the new kilowatt charge. And we were looking at the refuse and we believe we're short on that. We're now charging thirteen fifty for the residential part of our refuse and we're going to increase that two dollars to fifteen fifty and that pays for east range sanitation to come and pick up our garbage. Then also, in order to build back our electric fund, which we use to subsidize a lot of things in Gilbert, it's the history of the town has been to, when in need of money that we can't find anywhere else, we've been using the electric fund as a source of revenue. And in order to get that back, it's depleted right now, we're increasing our base rate for the electric from seven fifty to fourteen fifty, which is a seven dollar increase. And those are the reasons for the increases on that part. And then we had a discussion on the commercial side, on the refuse. And right now, they're paying a twenty dollar base fee to have the canisters in their space where they want them to be collected. And we're going to double that to forty dollar for base fees, just to have the canister on your site. And then also, we're doubling the lift for every time they lift and take away your garbage from twelve dollars to twenty-four. And we're also asking, in order to save the labor cost to the city, we're going from twice a week to a once a week service for the commercial. And I believe the summit view, do we want to, I mean, this is just a motion for increase, so I guess I stop there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So that's the motion for those increases.
Any further discussion? Or do I?
Or are you, Bob, are you making the motion then?
That, I guess that is my motion, yeah.
Question. You mentioned going to one day a week.
Yeah.
What, um, are we picking one day or just going to be Friday for commercial? What is that?
I guess it's up to, you guys would know what would work best.
I mean, how, are we informing our people on that? How we, are we sending letters?
They'll be informed when we have the hearing.
Yeah, when we have the hearing. And if once, yeah, it's not going to happen until.
Why are we looking at once? I don't remember discussing that part of it, but.
Because we're eliminating the labor of five hours. And it, and it seems like a lot of the, are not even being lifted, so there's, if you look at, you know, what he does per week, or some of them aren't, aren't even for the whole month. So we're thinking that he could handle it one time a week. And if that does not work, we can always change it back.
On the top, off the top of your head, just how, how many actually really need at least two a week? Or two a week, I should say?
Two, three maybe, maybe on holiday, I think the high rise needs two a week.
That's why you increase more containers then. The ones that really struggle, just give them two more then, like at the high rise.
And is it served case about two, or just cardboard?
Right, in the holidays, cardboard, and I don't know, you know, that's a different, you know?
That's their, if that's what they want to do, that's what they want to do.
That's what you can do, I mean, I think we got eight, nine cans up to now and into room first week.
But that's what I'm saying, if you have to increase them to twelve, thirteen, and then if you have to go to the dump twice.
Well, the hard part is, is vision of room for, I mean, I don't know if there's anything really for the, where the lot is or what up there for you to increase it, so it's just what's.
Well, if we have issues, then you have to deal with it. We'll, you know, deal with that if, if it comes up.
This is just a motion for the hearing.
Right, right. The, yeah, details of that can still be worked out, correct?
It's just a form.
But this is just for the hearing, for the rate increase.
Right, yeah.
But yeah, well.
So they'd be still up for discussion on two times or one time?
Yes. And we'll get your input.
Right, and that can, that can come later, because this won't go into effect until February.
Right.
You know, until we get these rates increased.
Well, it would, would have been part of the motion, that's what, that's the thing is.
That's, almost like to take that out of there completely.
So motion just for the base rates with further discussion on service.
Yeah.
But that's your motion.
Well, yeah, but, you know, trying to decrease the cost and that would have been a decrease in cost.
Like you said though, it's, it's not that it's not going to happen, it's just not to lock it into this right now.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that, yeah. That's fine, we can take that out then, yeah.
So you want a motion, you get a motion to amend the previous motion, stay?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll amend my motion.
Sure.
I'll amend my motion to take out the one time a week service for the commercial.
Otherwise, the rest stays.
Right, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilor Poten, supported by Councilor Skinsich to amend the rate increases per.
Amended the one time, the one time service for the commercial.
Right.
That's the only part, yeah.
Right, that motion, that, yeah. Motion to approve the next setting meeting for the twenty-eighth of November for public discussion on the rate increases.
November twenty-eighth, that would be, okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Five to six, twelve fifteen minutes.
Does that give enough time to post it for, to have a hearing?
I think it can be ten days, hard, yes, ten days.
So that is enough.
So that would be enough time.
Yeah. And what time is that going to be?
It's fourteen.
That'd be?
Twenty.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
No, we do, we do it this week, I think we do.
Weekends count, don't they?
Yes, just as soon as possible.
So it's good, twenty-eight.
We're good for the twenty-eighth and that's at?
Uh, five forty-five.
Five forty-five?
Yes.
To six P M. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. That was a tongue tie. Okay, and I think that's all we had on our working session?
Correct. That was amazing.
Perfect. Any miscellaneous announcements? I would just like to make one. And it's, I don't know if it's an announcement, but since we were on the topic of decorating the gazebo, would this city be interested in having a Christmas light challenge of, with the community? Announce, some, the city will sponsor a prize for best lights, whatever, for, for second and third.
New paperclip or something, or?
Well, that's.
So who would be the judge?
A new clock.
Counsel or?
Well, it's.
Or do they have the votes? And there's a lot of different ways to do it. Some cities take votes, some cities designate the fire department or police department to do the selection.
Police department would probably work.
Yeah, they're all twenty-four seven.
Look at Ty, he's like, man, don't even think about it.
Police chief has time.
No, I, I, just for discussion, I did read a comment on Concerned Citizens, somebody posted that, that would be nice and, I mean.
I'm all for it.
I don't know.
I've, I've been lazy for many years, I haven't decorated my house, but.
Is there a mon, is there a prize, monetary prize? And how is that handled?
Yeah, something minimal or?
You're going to decorate your house, aren't you?
I, I know the city of Waukegan pitches in prize line, but we do have some businesses that have already expressed maybe an interest in donating some funds for next year. If it doesn't happen this year or whatever, that there are some businesses that have expressed interest in helping to donate some funds for first, second, third prize. Just something fun for the community to do. We could probably also ask Jen for love.
There you go.
Would it be too late to do it for this year? Do you want to try and do it for this year? I mean, there's a lot of people that are decorating.
There is, and if we announce it.
Make a twenty-foot Santa just up the hill here, over here or somewhere. Yeah.
Ty's neighbor's got his stuff up pretty fast.
I say why not?
So it's just a matter of where the money comes from if you're going to offer a prize.
Right, and what it's at, and, and.
And it wouldn't even have to be a dollar, most, whether it was a twenty-five dollar per dollar utility bill or a hundred dollar per dollar utility bill, or, it could be anything, really.
Say, if you say free utility.
Oh, definitely.
Something like that for this year, that's simple.
It's simple. I'm, I say go for it. We can start advertising with the word.
The winner gets a V I P pass to the council seats.
Mayor Council, about thirteen years ago, when the city did it, they took it from the electrical fund, I believe it was first place was two hundred, second was a hundred, and the third was fifty dollars. I think the comment was made that with the amount of kilowatt hours that were used with all the lights, you pretty much got that money back through power sales. But that was prior to L E D lights, so.
Don't, don't tell them the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it would just be a matter of finding a date and then maybe a certain time period for folks to have their lights on, so just. And then finding a perimeter, maybe doing like thirty-seven down, put it up left, I mean, I mean, Gilbert kind of.
City of Gilbert, I guess, I don't know.
So my house?
Yeah.
City, you're in city limits.
Yeah.
I'm just on, I'm just right before the edge.
Register, that way it's a good, it's no, or?
Oh, there you go.
That's a good idea.
That would be even better, because then you're not driving aimlessly looking.
Be out in hudders.
You'd probably have to fill out a form.
A staff can get our first Facebook page up and that can be our first thing on our Facebook page.
What do you want to do for, I guess, a prize? For second, third?
Well, yeah, I think you got to have more than one.
Then money, or is it a utility credit, or?
The hard part is the utility credit. Some people don't have gift cards.
How about just a gift card?
Yeah.
A gift card with each, with each amount and they can do whatever they want with it.
That'll work.
Can we need a gift card?
Gift card from what?
Do you like Visa gift card? I don't see why you can't.
Where does, where does the gift card come from? Who finances the gift card?
Donations.
Solicited donations, or the city can?
I'm fine with donations.
Or the city, if it's a broad public purpose and everybody's allowed to participate.
I think Bob just volunteered to donate the first gift card.
I donate enough money in taxes to this town, or I don't get services.
Maybe if it doesn't happen this year, we have plenty of time to plan the next year. I, I agree with the comment that Facebook would be something fun. The city of Waukegan, we're used to getting into it, so it's just like, do you want the community involved? Have us come on?
Let's try and do it for the, if you're up for it, let's go for it.
So, so do we have a committee that can run with this? I mean, go ahead and look for donations and volunteers? That's what we need.
I'm sure we can get volunteers.
Because we're not doing it as a council.
Yeah. I, I don't know if I can, can I go out and solicit for donations?
Um, I think I would have Kirk Zoller take care of that, you know, and do that and set up a committee if you want, or, you know, just whoever, however you want to set it up. Some people designate an existing advisory committee to do it too. They can do the judging. I mean, communities do it all at the same pace, you know?
Yeah. So if we're talking about that, why aren't we talking about a Christmas parade?
It's kind of late for.
We do that third of July thing.
Yeah.
It's cold in the winter.
I just mean, maybe for next year.
Yeah, that's, I'm all for it. I, I'd like to see some activities. I worked here for fifteen years and all I really ever saw was the third of July. During the holidays, it was so bland around here, it was like a ghost town. Everybody's gone and I get that, they're visiting and whatever, but there was just really no spirit.
It's like twenty or thirty below.
No, but that's, you can dress warm.
Dating myself. When I was a kid, we used to have an organization called Frosty Frolic that used to do ice sculptures. And it was usually in January or February, when Mr. Brady's running for hockey, for the Hockey Association. And it was before the, you know, so.
Yeah, that Frosty Frolic was a big thing. That went back all the way to the early nineteen hundreds here, when the city was started, but.
Wow.
But it all comes back to volunteers to get the ball rolling.
True.
And that's the problem.
Right.
You know?
That's why they've all gone by the wayside, because it's just nobody, everybody just fizzles off.
Nothing traditionally carried on, but I think worth a shot if we can get it out there and we have a few, we have a few, maybe next year we get a few more.
Right. Good try.
We can call local establishments and just see who's willing to donate.
Yeah.
And then give a report and our next one will come up with the dates if we went like through, what, the first two weeks in December and then the third week somewhere before Christmas to be judging. And just see what we get.
Yeah.
Why not? What do we got to lose?
It would make sense just to get some kind of registration and have the map, maybe a map identifying the sites that you're checking and then have a deadline at which time they're going to be judged and determining who's doing the judging. But yeah, it's do, many communities do it and it's, it's fantastic.
Cool. Do some magic.
Yeah, you know, we always used to hit the businesses when we wanted donations for anything, at the Curlin Club here. And it always worked great because they were usually very generous when it came to things like this. That would be where I would look first.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're doing the soliciting, start there, yeah.
And none of us can do it.
Right, so I think, yeah, it's something worth trying, bring some spirit.
Get something going and we can put it on our fire department Facebook. Ty can put it on. Ty can put it on police or whatever.
Yeah, we can get the word out, and I think there's time to drill some.
Take the, whatever we gotta do. pamphlets, I don't know, whatever.
Excellent.
Excellent. So do we need to make a motion for this? No, probably not, huh?
I wouldn't think so.
Ask Jill to take care of it?
Do we need to make the motion to?
This.
You can direct city staff to put something together, and maybe see what they can come up with for the next meeting.
Yeah, move to have Jill to figure out what.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Pulis, supported by Councilor Skinsich to direct Clerk Zoller and Tanya Smith.
There you go.
To assist in putting together, what do you, what do you call it? Christmas?
So, very, very. I already told you, if you just run off that, I'd actually do it.
To look into Christmas festivities for lights. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, four to zero. Thank you. And that concludes, do I have a motion to adjourn, unless anybody has anything further?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Skinsich, supported by Councilor Pulis to adjourn at seven forty-nine P.M. I love that clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thanks everyone for coming.